Okay, I'd like to call this June 6th, 2022's Business School Committee Meeting to Order. Mrs. Kennedy, can you take the roll, please? I'm here.
Here. Present.
Here.
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 All right, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I will turn it over to Vice Chair Sarah Hall.
Guessing there's no public comment, can't even see.
No public.
Right. So consent agenda, I don't even know where people are. Mr. Callahan?
Hi.
Hey, any warrants?
Yes, we have three warrants.
Okay.
I move that the following named bills of Newburyport Public Schools amount in the aggregate $488,215.99. Be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All set?
Yes.
Great. We have a set of minutes to approve from our May 16th meeting. Start with corrections. I have a couple. Are you looking at those, Mrs. Kennedy?
Yes.
So if you look under the roll call, it says all members found present, but as you can see, Mayor Riordan and Sheila Spalding were not. So just finish up that sentence. No, it's fine. And then in the student rep report, maybe someone can help me confirm this, but I, second bullet point, I believe Emma Lowe is the valedictorian. Does that sound right? Emma Lowe, not Mia Yim is the salutatorian. I was at that event. That's what I think is correct. Okay. Yeah, and then Jack Falner is the Brezhnerhand Scholar Athlete.
Yeah, I think you're just missing the.
Yeah, just Emma Lowe is missing as valedictorian. And then under, I think we need a little clarity in some of the comments under the budget update. Ms. Walker, did you want to address that? Because I think it was your comment. Okay.
Yeah, the comment about the budget was just that the 1% change was not related to the vote by the city council because the city council hasn't voted on the budget yet. It was the budget that was presented by the mayor. So I think it's under my comment on fiscally, under the school budget update, my comment should be 6% that school committee passed, 1% less than the mayor passed. This thing keeps swinging, that's why. So it should be 1% less than the mayor presented. And then I think Mr. Callahan had a similar comment further down that is the same thing. It said 1% reduction by the city council is 1% reduction by the mayor.
Thank you. Any other corrections to these minutes? We'll have two abstentions, the two people who were absent. Yes. It is the 21st.
But it's June, not January.
Oh, that's good catch. Not January.
She caught it. I was just repeating her.
June, but it is the 21st. June, yes. Wow, I missed that one. Any other corrections?
I move we accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Great. Oh, so next up is collective bargaining agreement between the Newburyport Teachers Association and the Newburyport School Committee. So there is a draft in your packet and hopefully everyone had a chance to look that over a little bit. Why don't we get started with a motion to approve if we could, and then we can have some discussion.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Could we just get a brief summary, maybe from the negotiating team?
Sure.
As to what has changed and what.
Yep, I'm just gonna scroll down.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but I think that just would be helpful.
That's totally, that's totally good. So just so I'm clear, Superintendent, we can discuss any of the content of this memorandum of understanding. Just if there were any specific questions or concerns about the negotiating process, we would take that into executive session. We don't anticipate needing to do that, but it's indicated at the bottom of the agenda in that event. Okay, so if I'm not sure about answering something, I'll just jump over to you. So if you take a look at the MOI, it really just summarizes the changes. And I'm going to say generally, the process was very positive and respectful throughout. We were all trained in interest-based bargaining. And I think it was five, maybe five sessions, we were able to get through all of this in five sessions. And it has been ratified by the Newburyport Teachers Association. So this is now our step to look at it. I think probably the big news is the compensation. And that's, I'm trying to see where that's listed here. Well, I know what it is in any case. Oh, if you go down to number nine, salary schedule, there is a 3% increase for the teachers in the coming year, which was in part reflecting all of the hard work that went in and the extra work that went in through the pandemic. We were fortunate, one of the fortunate few districts to not be dealing with teacher shortages. And so part of that is gratitude through that time. And then 2%, 2% again in the third year, although there's also a $500 bump up for our longevity steps at 11 through 11E, which overall reflects more like a 2.5. Other changes were kind of tweaks, like there was three days for funeral leave and we increased that to five through negotiations. The extra class was notable, and that's something that we've been working towards. I don't know if you want to just describe that briefly, Superintendent? Because that was a win, I would say. You want to address that a little bit? Sorry, this is awkward.
All right. Oh, is this one on? No, there we go. Yeah, well, first of all, I just want to thank both Vice Chair Sarah Hall and Mr. Callahan for being on the negotiating team. And 100%, I agree, I think from the start to the finish of the process, the IBB interest-based bargaining was very effective. We just had that forum, but it's really having different views, finding common ground, making compromises, and creating a contract that I think works for everybody. So one of the aspects that, in my feeling as Superintendent, is utilizing our staff as best to our ability. So an additional class is going to be piloted within this three-year contract. And I think that does, it gives us a lot of flexibility, especially with intervention for teachers that, you know, want to create more electives, more access for our students. The additional class language in here allows them to volunteer, let the administration know in each building that they're interested in either, you know, picking up an intervention, additional intervention to support students, or an additional class. So I just, you know, want to thank Ms. Hall and Mr. Callahan for assisting us with that and getting that to an agreement. Just I'm a firm believer in building, you know, teacher leadership capacity. I'm also a firm believer in utilizing the experts within the school system. So this gives us an opportunity, I think, to help more students and families in Newburyport. And also benefits the teachers for additional compensation for additional work. So just, you know, that was really, I think, a big benefit. This can be a big benefit for us. And what I also like about it, it's a three-year pilot. So at the end of this contract, we can reevaluate as we begin the next negotiation. Does that sum it up?
Yeah, that's great. Question?
Yeah, yeah. Is there anything in this contract that is sort of like ongoing conversations that we're going to have in the year about any issues? You know, in the past in other contracts, we've had, you know, study groups to look at issues. I just wonder if there are any issues that.
If you look at number 11 parental leave, just scroll down to that. That was one where we didn't really reach a consensus, but there wasn't even a lot of clarity around what it was that they were concerned about. And I think that's one of the things that brought us around to, we really need an HR director for the district. Because I think part of it was not just the contract, but the how it was applied, maybe some inconsistencies or confusion around the rules for parental leave. Because a lot of that is just set state law, right? And so if you see under number 11, it says we're going to create a joint committee and, you know, hopefully we'll have that new HR person onboard and get all that smoothed out. Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Yep, and I think the other piece too is part of the old contract because of COVID. There were some study groups, but you know, if you go through the draft with the school committee has, I can go through these quick. Two was really on sick time. And that's just front-loading the sick days, especially for our new employees. They accrue 1.5 a month. And in some scenarios, you know, we experience and some of our new staff might get ill in the beginning of the school year, especially with COVID. So that was a piece of that. And there's also language addressing if those staff members, you know, leave early, leave the district early. So that was one piece. The Special Education Prep Time Committee, I know Nancy Quatch has done a great job working with our Special Education Department, but we also kind of want to honor, that was some old language in the past, that we just kind of want to bring that group back. Class coverage, the change there is paying teachers, it was $25 if the teachers were going to cover a class. We just brought that up to $35, which is their curriculum rate. Funeral leave, Ms. Hall talked about that. Standard is five days, so that was an easy one for us. In-service credit, there was a lot of conversation here. We came to an agreement for the in-service credit. And there was some confusion on mentors and mentoring that was cleared up in this language. Let's see, the salary memo, there was conversation here. Salary memo, it's Mr. Little Hale, he loves paper, as we all know. So he was adamant that we will be sending out this memo electronically. And the teachers were amendable to that. We looked at the compensation we just talked about. And I think this is the other piece through Ms. Hall and Mr. Callahan really wanted. The nursing staff, when you look at their step in scale, there were some, I guess, irregularities in the past contract that I think we rectified for our nurses. So there's language there on their step in scale and their board certification that the DESC recognizes as a master. So there's some language there in some of those discrepancies. Ms. Hall talked about parental leave. And then last but not least, we just talked about the additional class. And then the last piece, Lisa Furlong, Sarah Scannell, so and management and the NTA, throughout the contract deliberations, worked on housekeeping. And they went through the entire contract and cleaned up all that type of language. So, you know, this is hours and hours of work. And when you look at this little summary, it's like, oh, that was pretty easy. But it was, it was not very easy. It's a collaborative effort.
Yeah, although it was productive, it was very productive.
Very productive, yes.
Mr. Callahan, did you want to add anything?
No, I think it was explained very well. Thank you, Superintendent.
Any further?
Although I did, I do want to say it was a good experience. You know, you're seeing news stories now with like Brookline and other cities, and you're like, what? Just do it the way we do.
Made a lot of sense. Yep. Any further questions?
Oh, and just the last piece for the school committee. The teachers' union ratified on May 9th, they ratified the contract. So now it's, that was to us, or to the school committee.
Okay.
I would assume this should be a roll call vote, I would assume.
Does that seem appropriate?
Yes.
Before that, I'm just going to restate the motion, since it's been a minute here, just for clarity. So this is the motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Newburyport Teachers Association and the Newburyport School Committee beginning September 20th, so contract beginning September 1st of this year through August 31st of 2025. I think we already had a second. We've had some discussion. And Ms. Kennedy, we're going to do a roll call.
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Mannan?
Yes.
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 Thank you, everyone. Next up, we have the Perspectives in Leadership and Change Class, Overnight Trip to DC. And Mr. Abrams, if you're still with us.
Yes.
Where's a good place for him to present?
Yes, the podium.
Thank you. Okay.
Now, Mr. Abrams added again. He takes a program and makes it a national recognition program. So it's a good problem to have up here tonight.
Thank you very much for having me. I guess I'm here to petition the school committee for permission to attend an overnight field trip to Washington, DC. We'd be taking five students who are actually graduated seniors. We'd be traveling to Washington, DC on June 19th until June 22nd. All expenses are paid through the three foundations we worked with, the Department of Homeland Security, Adventure Partners, as well as the McCain Institute for International Leadership. We have won this trip as part of a presentation that we have due to the Department of Homeland Security. We are one of three finalists of all the high schools in the country. If we, and when we win, we will get $5,000. Second place is $3,000, $1,000 for third place. I just think it's a wonderful opportunity for these students to actually see, come to fruition, all of their hard work. And we're really looking forward to it, I hope.
Great.
Questions or?
Does anyone have questions for Dr. Abrams?
No, just a, just a comment. Having spent time in Washington, DC in June, bring several changes of clothes. Humidity is horrific.
We're only allowed one carry-on, so.
Yeah.
They didn't, they weren't that, they weren't that munificent with the money.
How many students?
So we have five. The class was originally 15. We had to select our top five to go. It was kind of a tough vetting process, but a lot of these seniors were going to college visits. One of them was traveling to Germany with her family, so it worked out pretty well.
Fantastic. Okay, can I get a motion to approve this trip?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's a great trip.
All in favor?
Aye.
I was the second. Always the second.
See how easy that was?
It was. And then the presentation will be livestreamed.
Oh, wonderful. Will you send out some information?
Absolutely. And you can see, because I can't be with them, so they're going to be on their own. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Who's microphone?
Yeah, somebody's microphone is humming. Oh, is that, are we good now? Thank you.
It's like the wizard out there.
The voice of wisdom from the corridor.
Okay, so next up, we have our school committee meeting schedule for the coming year. This is a second read. I'll just remind everyone that meetings can be changed. So I think it's good to go. Let's get a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Please no.
We are so busy tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're on to our subcommittee updates, starting with Mr. Callahan for finance.
Nope, we will, we meet on the 16th.
And have we agreed we're going to move that until after knock class date, like 9:30?
Yeah, whenever that ends, we'll just go right into.
So maybe you can get that officially changed?
Sure.
On the posting. Thanks. Policy Subcommittee, Ms. Spalding?
Yes, we will be meeting next Monday, the 13th.
Great. And Joint Ed, Mr. Mannan?
Joint Ed is meeting tomorrow night at 7:30 at the Senior Center, I think it's 7:30. And we've been invited to attend their Finance Committee meeting, which takes place just before that.
Is that at 7?
6, 6:30 or 7.
6:30, okay, great. And we also have Transportation Advisory Update, Ms. Walker?
Yeah, we will be meeting next Tuesday at 4 o'clock. And we've made good progress on just talking about different issues about public, sorry, school transportation topics. We're going to hopefully release a survey to families about how they make their transportation choices and what they are. And I'm going to stop talking because my microphone is buzzing, but yes, we'll have, and I'll provide minutes at our next regularly scheduled meeting, I guess, which might not be for a while.
Great, thank you. Ms. Ippolito, are you here? Okay, so make your way up to the podium for the Assistant Superintendent's Report.
Hello, everybody. Good to see you all again. So I'm just going to present the CISL report. We had our last CISL meeting on May 23rd. And during that time, Dr. Abrams and I presented about the literacy plan for the district, which we are extremely proud of. We're making lots of headway in the district in terms of our curriculum resources, curriculum mapping of literacy from pre-K to 12. In the packet, I was just going to give a quick overview, we just talked about the different areas of reading. And then what is our goal, our shared vision for effective instruction and effective literacy in the district. Then we talked about, we named our actual curriculums that we use and that it's scientifically based. Then we also talked about assessments that we use, but not only were we talking about the various assessments and some changes that we're making, but what does proficiency look like in literacy across all the different grade levels? And so all of these pieces, I just want to say, are also going to become part of our district literacy plan, which is actually much more detailed, believe it or not, than this long presentation. But I really feel like the community has been asking for this information. And I want us just to be transparent and clear on everything that we're doing to support our students. So that hopefully will be completed by June 30th is my, is our deadline. And I want to thank Rebecca Stewart also. She's a literacy coach down at the Brez. Dr. Abrams and I have been working on that. And our teachers have actually been working on the curriculum mapping. So really teaching them and expanding our horizons in terms of essential questions and what are the standards and what are the sub-skills of those standards and how does it relate to the data? So they've done an excellent job. Also, part of the presentation was talking about tiered supports of intervention. So once we have the data and we can break apart the proficiency levels, what are we doing with the data? We are providing very explicit instruction, either through Title I or our staff working with our different coaches to support students and bringing in our families to the conversation. And then lastly, towards the end of the packet, outlines our district objectives for our outcomes, a part of our literacy plan. And we view this entire literacy plan document as a fluid document. It isn't stagnant. So we will continually review and add to build the strongest literacy program possible. Also, during CISL, we talked about, we had our staff, I'm sorry, our student reps. We had Olivia Diambrazio, Brozio, I always get, I'm Italian, I always get that wrong, I don't know why. Who is just a stellar senior who graduated yesterday. She did an excellent job just talking about the happenings and events at the secondary level. And then we have Colby Keef, who is a elementary student, middle elementary student who comes. And he also did an excellent job talking about the various events. And what I want to say, I hope Colby, you're watching, Colby came in back in October, kind of like shy, didn't want to be involved. And now he marches right in, he has his report, and I just feel so proud of him for that work. Our next CISL meeting is next Monday night, and we will be talking about summer reading. So come one, come all. Our librarians across all the levels have done an amazing job planning out the summer reading opportunities for our students this year. Any questions?
Yes, Ms. Walker?
Thank you for the complete packet. That was really helpful. And I'm sorry I couldn't attend the presentation. But I guess if you are working on completing the action plan itself, will you have details in that plan on what metrics you're using and what reporting? You know, I think for the school committee, understanding what metrics we should be looking for, tracking, you know, progress and so forth, will you be listing that in the action plan?
Yes, and it's actually, there's snippets of it. It's kind of hard to tell that's what you're actually looking at in this presentation, but we will have the actual tools that we're using. So we are moving away from STAR 360, and we're going to be utilizing iReady instead. And we were able to get, quite honestly, a sweet deal for an excellent program. So we'll be utilizing it in both math and literacy. And they've thrown in the instructional piece for both for free. So we're excited about that. And we have professional development around all of the various tools that we're using. So we already trained our EL staff, as well as our Title I staff, on Dibbels Amplify. And they gave it a trial run over the last couple of weeks, and they loved it because it gave us instant data to see the growth of our students throughout this year. So.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. And then I think also wherever you can, just tie it to what the state recommended practices are and what the metrics are that we're, I mean, I know all of these are, but however much you can help us tie it to the.
Absolutely, yes.
Guidance is really helpful. I appreciate it.
Great suggestion, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys.
All right, Superintendent, your turn.
Test one, two, test one, two. Doing all right, Ms. Nickerson? All right, well, first of all, I want to thank our retirees. And tomorrow, our NEF is going to be honoring our retirees, along with some big awards, community awards. So looking forward to attend that tomorrow night. I'd just like to read down a list of these great teachers that will be retiring. And when I add up the years of experience from all of them, it's 266 years of teaching experience. That's going to be leaving the Newburyport Public Schools. So Laurie Barrows, grade three teacher, retiring after 29 years. Linda Dodge, special ed teacher at the Brezhnerhand, will be retiring after 26 years. Amy Fleming, psychologist at the NOC, retiring after 29 years. Jan Cruzmark, wellness teacher, who actually crushed me in the plank my first year. I think she did seven minutes, eight minutes, I only did three.
Just can't let that go.
I can't, so.
She used to run a gymnastics school.
Yeah, she, yeah, she was a phenomenal teacher, wellness teacher. She's retiring after 21 years. Teresa Matthews, a literacy support at the Brezhnerhand, retiring after 14 years. Luanne McKinney, principal secretary at the NOC, is retiring after 19 years. Herbie, our custodian at the NOC, yeah, Herbie Pollard, is retiring after 18 years at the NOC. Ms. Sheen, NTA president, and negotiated her. Ms. Sheen, NTA president and negotiated her last contract, is retiring, grade three president, after 30 years. Nina Swain, grade seven teacher at the NOK, retiring after 35 years. And then John Reynolds, science teacher at the NOK, retiring after 16 years. So want to congratulate them and give them a little round of applause on TV applause here. There we go.
I had Nina Swain, her first year teaching.
Wow. Yeah.
First or second year, I think, of teaching, I had her.
So she, you owe her all the credit.
Got her started on the right foot.
Awesome. All right, the other piece I just wanted to recognize is the success of our athletic programs. And in the packet, our boys' track team were state champions. And Don Henninger and his coach and coaching staff and the entire team, we congratulate them. And our spring sports, just some Cape Anne champs. Our baseball team are the Cape, Cape Anne League champs. Girls tennis, girls lacrosse, boys lacrosse, and obviously the boys' track team. Last year, Newberryport High School was the Division III top school in athletics in the state. And we may be in the running to repeat that, so we're really proud of that. This week, our softball team, just giving updates for people that want to attend some games during the nice weather here. Our softball team will be playing at Bishop Fenwick. That actually happened on June 3rd, so sorry about that. They lost 2-0. Our girls tennis is the number one seed in the state, and they are playing today, June 6th, at Penn Tucket. Our boys tennis team is playing at Belmont today at 4:00. Baseball team is playing Whittier, I mean, I'm sorry, on June 6th at 4:00, which is today. And boys lacrosse, June 9th, which is Thursday, at 4:00 in, oh, I'm sorry, versus Swam Scott, at Swam Scott. And girls lacrosse, number one seed, is playing also at home on June 9th at 6:00. And what we'll do is we'll obviously post that, so we make sure we have all the accurate dates and times for everybody to attend. And that's all I have for my superintendent's report.
Okay, great. We had, do we have any new business?
Can I, go ahead. So I just want to express my appreciation to the staff and the students who pulled off a fantastic graduation ceremony yesterday, and particularly for providing that excellent weather. But overall, I was just so impressed by the students, and I know Mr. Wolf isn't here right now, but, you know, he came in with that class, and as did you, and, you know, it, it was really remarkable, the connection of him with those students. And he's already had a big impact on that school, and it was evident in the, the quality of the speakers and the evident love that a lot of those kids have for that school. So I was very appreciative personally, I'm very appreciative because Sam is graduating this year, but, but I did really enjoy being part of that ceremony and felt very proud to be a Newberryport parent and school committee member. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Awesome. Do you want to say something?
I just have 100% the graduation was amazing, amazing class. They, as you said, they've come so far. And we talk about portrait of a graduate and the skill set that they're going to need to be successful. And credit Mr. Wolf and the administration for really developing a sounding board and really a process for student voice. So I do believe they're all leaving with the ability to self-advocacy and to, to really challenge themselves outside of, outside of Newberryport. So we're proud of them. It was awesome. It's a great day. I also just have some new business that I think down the road. I know Bob LaFrance, he came to me regarding memorial plaque for a teacher, Paul Coleman, that was, I guess, an icon in Newberryport. And I said, that's something that down the road, the school committee would have a discussion about. The other piece for our school committee, we are still in negotiations with ASME and our IA Union. We do have upcoming negotiations this week and then one the following week, and we're hoping to come to an agreement. So I do think if we do have an agreement and that gets ratified before June 21st, you know, my recommendation would be if we have that, and there's no guarantee, but if we did have that opportunity to maybe have a special school committee meeting for a half hour or so, and just go over both of those contracts, so we can complete all three unions before the end of the school year. That's our goal. We're hopeful that will happen, but, you know, if it doesn't, then we'll just continue throughout the summer with those other two unions, so. And I think that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Going back to that wonderful graduation yesterday, I just wanted to mention, since most of us were there, in student Charlie Grossman's speech, he spoke about Deb Zabo and poetry soup. And if that's something that sounded like you would like to experience that for yourself coming up this Sunday, is my favorite poem project. It's going to be 2 o'clock behind the Custom House. I'm going to be reading a poem. Mr. Menon's going to be reading a poem. Mr. Gallagher's going to be reading a poem. Anyone else? I see, Ms. Ippolito will be reading a poem, so come on, come on down to the Custom House. It should be a great time. Just wanted to say that. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.